Ready in just a second. Apologize for the slight delay. Let the record reflect, we reconvene with all members present. If you're able, please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I just want to remember a few Madisonians we lost over the last few weeks. On May 17th, retired Madison Police Sergeant and a proud U.S. Army veteran, John Sabanash Senior, passed away recently with his wife and family on his side after complications from classical Hodgkin's syndrome related to ancient orange, Vietnam. He grew up in Quantico, enlisted in the United States Army, volunteered for the Army Aviation. Following his rigorous combat and aviation skills training, he was deployed to South Vietnam. He served as a UH-1 helicopter mechanic and then served as a crew chief on the Huey Medical Evacuation Helicopter. Following combat fight training, he became a crew chief, flying lifesaving combat missions with Huey hoists over jungle canopy, saving American lives under enemy fire. John received many honors for his service, including National Defense Medal, Vietnam Campaign Medal, Vietnam Service Medal, Bronze Star, 14 Air Medals, and Distinguished Flying Cross. Following his military career, he was hired by East Hanover Police Department, where he served for five years. And on March 14th, 1978, he began his lifelong career when he was hired by the Madison Police Department. Enjoyed the whole time and anyone that knew John during those times, I always enjoyed talking with John. He was here for 25 years, promoted from patrolman to traffic safety sergeant at age 72. He was so proud to be a police officer in Madison Police Department and never forgot his brothers in blue. He retired from Long Forest in 2002, relocated to the eastern shore of Maryland, but I did see him a couple of times when he was running safety courses, traffic safety courses. He's survived by his wife Gail, his son John Jr., his son Christopher, his daughter, and Madison Police Department employee Christie Keel, and his daughter Dawn, and he has six grandchildren. And then we lost Paul Skeeter Mantone Jr., lifelong Madison resident, passed away on May 31st, aged 64. Survived by his sister Lorraine and his brother Michael, many nieces and nephews and cousins and dear friends. He was predeceased by his father Paul, also known as Skeeter, who swept our sidewalks in his retirement, and his mother Eleanor. Paul was born in 1959, raised on Britton Street in Madison with his brother and sister. Was the 1977 graduate in Madison High School and went on to County College Morris. Had a career for Verizon for over 30 years and then Spaulding, a union rep for his colleagues. He was well respected by his coworkers and always fought for what they deserved while he was the union rep. In his retirement, kept busy with several hobbies. He did keep an interest in restoring, modifying antique cars and the hot rods, also for Harley-Davidson Motorcycles, and he was a longtime member of the Rose City Rodders Car Club, which I didn't know existed. And then Joan Marie Seisig, aged 90, passed away at her home on June 6th, surrounded by her five children. Born in Newark, grew up in Maplewood and graduated Columbia High School, moved to Madison, where she lived here for 60 years. She worked at ExxonMobil in Flora Park as Executive Secretary, dedicated member of St. Vincent's Marner Church, avid walker and passionate fan of Notre Dame football. She was predeceased by her husband of 55 years, Patrick Joseph, passed away in 2017. Survived by her children Michael, Patricia, Barbara, Stephen, and Daniel. She was also survived by her sister Helen, her six grandchildren. She was predeceased by her sister Mary Ellen and brother Albert. So let's take a moment to remember Police Sergeant John Sabanash Senior, Paul Skeeter Mantone Jr., and Joan Marie Seisig, and let us pass our thoughts on to the families and friends they leave behind. Thank you.
I have a motion for the executive minutes of May 22nd, 2023.
Some votes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of May 22nd, 2023.
Some votes.
Second.
Any discussion, any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, welcome all. Apologize for a slight delay. And also apologize for my, what will be a fairly long meeting today, because we have an extra week in between, and I did a little research also I want to share. A couple of things that happened over the last three weeks. We had a great day for the annual commemoration Memorial Day. As always, our patriotic celebrations committee worked with the American Legion, put together a great and respectful ceremony to remember Madisonians and all those who gave their lives to our country. And certainly, as we heard about John Sabanash, it's a reminder that there are those that die while fighting and those that die years later defending our country. And then on Saturday, June 3rd, was the annual recognition of Madison's Hidden Figures. The banners are now up downtown, so I encourage everyone to take a look at the banners and the story behind the African-Americans who have left their mark in Madison and beyond. I want to thank Keisha Tucker for her leadership in this great project. Also, on June 3rd, Council President John Hoover and I sat down with members of the Madison Community Pool, and this was a follow-up to the resident comments, also a chance to hear an update for the coming season. It's often forgotten that, from its inception, the Madison Community Pool has been an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit, running a summer pool for the residents of Madison and their communities. Unlike, as it's often compared to like Ginti Pool, Morris Township Colony in Chatham, or Flora Park Community Pool, what's different here is the Madison Community Pool does not receive any taxpayer support beyond the land that it sits on. That means the full cost of operations must be covered by membership income. Pool operations are labor-intensive operations. Madison has a lot of pool area, which means a lot of guards, and then you've got that covered for all the hours, which demands more guards and support staff to provide an enjoyable summer family experience. And then you throw in a pandemic with limited membership and then increase the minimum wage, as most of the employees are fairly young and were hired at minimum wage. The pool has seen many challenges from many angles. That said, the business plan is headed in the right direction, and as of our meeting, there were still memberships available, so the sun will come out, so please go ahead and sign up. And if you have older teens or young adults looking for a great outdoor summer job, they are still looking for lifeguards. And having worked for the Y for so long, I can tell you that a child's lifeguard certification can almost guarantee employment at any time, so I hope to see you all at the pool. And then on the same Saturday, I headed to the MRC to recognize National Trail Day and to cut the ribbon on our new accessible trail, joined by Council Liaison to Parks, Rachel Erlich, along with Melissa Honahan and the Chair of Open Space Historic Preservation and Recreation Committee, and County Commissioner Steve Shaw, and many other volunteers and supportive residents. There, I got to meet Brian, who is a resident of the Cheshire Home. Brian told me how much he's already enjoying the trail, and it certainly helped he was wearing a Yankee shirt, too. He was told that he would be a quadriplegic for the rest of his life. He is now a power police, he now has use of his arms. He still relies on his powered wheelchair to get around, but he talked at how he uses the path to access the fields, to watch the games, as he was a youth, former youth sports coach, and also enjoyed the outdoors as he stops to do his dumbbell exercises. This trail is already making a difference in people's lives. And shifting gears a little, last Monday was the annual Central Avenue School Bike Rodeo. This event was supported from Madison Police Department, and Avenues in Motion, formerly Transoptions, teaches bike safety and provides checkup for bicycles. I joined the fifth graders for a ride around the neighborhood. I learned after my first year is don't be in the middle of the pack, riding near the rear. And then last Tuesday, we had the Madison Chamber had their annual awards dinner, and among the awards are several special recognitions. Rocco Iosa, who we recognized here with a proclamation, was given the Distinguished Service Award for not only over six years of business in Madison, but his support to the community. And there was three milestone awards. War Burroughs Core Endangered Funeral Home, recognized for being in business in Madison for 203 years. That's going to be a tough record to beat. Madison Area YMCA celebrating 150 years of being a core of our community. And as we wrote at our last meeting, Madison Rotary Club recognized for 100 years of service above self. And the Thursday Morning Club received a very well-deserved community service award. And then, Thursday, cut the ribbon on the reopened Staples Store, closed temporarily for structural damages, but now it is up and running, so it's great to have it open again. And the last event of the last three weeks is the wet down of Fire Engine Number Three just past Saturday, which I know a lot of people went. So, I want to wrap up before I do some proclamations with update from Drew. And before I give the actual update, I want to share something. Again, this is overstaying my welcome tonight, but I apologize. But, you know, I felt that we've heard from a lot of Drew, a lot of experts in the Drew Forest, we've heard from residents and friends, and have been even serenaded by Drew Forest singers, so I figured the one thing that was missing in this day and age was actually to plug into ChatGPT, why, can you do a paper on the importance of the Drew Forest? So, it spit this out, and I have to read it because it is so impressive and scary in a way. So the title it came up with was "Preserving the Jewel: The Importance of Saving the Drew University Forest." Introduction: Natural ecosystems are invaluable assets that contribute to the health and well-being of our planet and its inhabitants. Forests in particular are vital ecosystems that provide multitude of ecological, social, and economic benefits. And you know I didn't write this because there's a lot of big words in here. The Drew University Forest, located in the heart of Madison, is a remarkable example of a thriving woodland ecosystem. This paper highlights the importance of saving the Drew University Forest, emphasizing ecological significance, educational value, and role in community well-being. And it talks about ecological significance. The Drew Forest is a rich and diverse ecosystem, teeming with a wide array of plant and animal species. It serves as a habitat for numerous native and migratory bird species, mammals, reptiles, and amphibians, contributing to the regional biodiversity. Forests play a crucial role in maintaining ecosystem balance by filtering air and water, sequestering carbon dioxide, and providing a habitat for pollinators. Preserving the Drew University Forest ensures the protection of these vital ecological functions, safeguarding the broader health of the surrounding environment. The educational value it covers. The Drew University Forest presents a living laboratory for educational and research purposes. It provides opportunity for students, researchers, and nature enthusiasts to engage in hands-on learning and scientific inquiry. The forest ecosystem serves as a classroom without walls, while individuals can observe and study the ecological processes, conduct field experiments, gain deeper understanding of the forest ecology, biodiversity, and conservation. By saving the Drew Forest, we ensure the future generations can access this invaluable educational resource. Community well-being. Green spaces such as Drew University have been profound in positive impact on community well-being. Forests offer retreat from the hustle and bustle of urban life, providing a tranquil space for recreation, relaxing, and reflection. The forest promotes physical and mental health by offering opportunities for outdoor activities such as hiking, jogging, bird watching, and nature photography. It fosters a sense of community and pride and connectivity, serving as a gathering place for events, community celebrations, well, we might not quite do that at Drew Forest, and nature-based programs. Saving the Drew Forest is crucial in preserving these benefits for current and future generations. And then it goes on to climate change mitigation. I'm almost done. Forests are indispensable allies in fight against climate change, act as carbon sinks, absorbing significant amounts of atmospheric carbon dioxide through photosynthesis and storing it in their biomass and soils. By conserving the Drew University Forest, we ensure that the preservation of this carbon sequestration potential, helping to mitigate the impacts of greenhouse gas emissions, protect forests as a vital strategy in addressing climate change and maintaining a stable and habitable planet for future generations. And the conclusion. The Drew University Forest stands as a remarkable natural resource, offering multitude of ecological, educational, and community benefits. Its preservation is crucial to safeguarding to biodiversity, supporting research, education, promoting community well-being, in mitigating climate change. The collective efforts of individuals, organizations, and policymakers are necessary to ensure the long-term survival of this invaluable woodland ecosystem. By saving the Drew Forest, we commit to a sustainable and thriving future, where the beauty and benefits of nature are cherished and protected. That's from ChatGPT. It's pretty credible and pretty scary. So, let me just quickly give you the Drew update. So, this past Friday, just ahead of the deadline, we submitted our application to Morris County Open Space Trust Fund. The funding request is for $10 million, which represents a substantial support to the purchase price and permanent preservation of the forest. Receiving this grant will be a major step towards saving the forest, but we aren't there yet. At a face-to-face meeting with Drew on March 28th, 2023, we presented a written offer to Drew for the purchase of the forest. Our grant request was based on this offer, and as of Friday's grant submission, we have not heard back from Drew on this offer. An agreement on price and then subsequent purchase contract are required for the grant to move forward, so we certainly hope that Drew joins us and ChatGPT in supporting the saving of the forest and going beyond their verbal commitment to save the forest with an agreement that ensures that Drew will forever be the university in the forest. And yes, Tom, I went right past my four minutes.
You passed this time.
Yep. So, our employees of the month are Loretta DeAngelo from Public Works, and Jill Strellick, who works with the Tax Assessor in Building Department. Both office assistants consistently provide outstanding customer support to residents or positive attitudes and pleasant demeanor are a huge asset to the borough. And we now have a couple of proclamations, yes, there's more, for our HPC. Jill and Adrian, want to come on up and join me? So this is now an annual tradition to present proclamations from the HPC to recognize commitment to historic preservation. I will, for this one, read the first whereas, which gives a background, and on the future ones, I'll just give the background on the project. Whereas, the Madison Historical Preservation Commission, it was established in 1993 by ordinance number 31 to encourage preservation of sites of historic archaeological, cultural, scenic, and architectural significance, and to provide architectural advice and recommendations on plans submitted not only for businesses and for residents in historic districts, but throughout the borough of Madison. And whereas, a building at 29 Main Street, and we have Susie Whitehorn in the audience, was constructed in 1912, is currently owned by Steve Whitehorn, is a handsome neoclassical style commercial building with press brick facade that rises above the cornice line, a traditional entrance and large display windows. It is currently occupied Madison Wine Cellar, originally occupied by Tiger Grocery Store. When the Madison Civic and Commercial Historic District was named National Register of Historic Places in 1990, the Tiger Grocery was identified as a contributing building in the district. Exterior work carried out the past three years, including rehabilitating the storefront, removing the painted plywood paneling that's surrounding the store's original plate glass windows, which revealed the elements of its cornice and molding that had been covered up probably in the 1960s, and returning the running width of the building. Whereas, the, I can't talk this much in one meeting. The paint was stripped from the brick corners of the building, revealing a distinctive striped effect and providing a bit of architectural whimsy on an otherwise severe classical facade, where the penmanship in the center of the front roof line remained intact, needed only to be repainted. And whereas, recognition by the HPC is given to Mr. Jerry Bruno, AIA of West Caldwell, for his dedication to restoration of the building facade at 29 Main Street, as well as other prominent properties in Madison. He has helped Madison residents thoughtfully renovate and update their homes while maintaining the look and feel of the original structure. So now, therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the government body, hereby recognize Jerry Bruno for his consciousness to regard to historic preservation, which contributes to the character of the borough of Madison as a place of beauty and architectural value. Jerry, thank you very much.
I'll say a few words. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the Whitehorns, Susie and Steve. Known them for over 20 years, and it starts with the client, actually. The client always wanted to do the best thing for Madison as well for the building, so I thanks them, Susie, and giving me the opportunity to be their sort of lifelong market. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And another creative restoration, Nick, come on up.
This has been such a great restoration and such a part of Madison, it's already how it feels that you've been there forever, which is a good thing. The building at 27 Kings Road, which is owned by the Mantone family, was originally constructed in 1942. It operated as a mobile gas station in the 50s and 60s and became Mini Motors Repair Shop in the 1970s, and when the Conleys stopped having VWs, they had to close. After 35 years in business, it was being used only as extra storage space for the local car dealership in 2019. Whereas, Nick Vorderman, a lifelong automotive enthusiast, had the idea to open a cafe in an old garage building, and took it upon himself to renovate the structure for modern usage rather than demolish and build new. My understanding is you actually were searching out a retired service garage. And the existing garage bay doors were cleaned and refurbished, the smaller windows in the old shop office were replaced with a series of large pane windows to create glass walls, resulting in bright, open, airy space, and the brick exterior was painted entirely in a white-black trim throughout. And what is missing here is, we already mentioned that it was a mobile station, but the uncovering the old mobile gas sign, which is now can be seen on the side of faces here, your store. Whereas, I lost my track, you know, you got to watch that. The opening of Sunny Motor Company with refreshing exterior landscaping has transformed an underutilized, unappealing corner into an attractive, popular destination. And whereas, the Madison Historic Preservation Commission applauds the ingenuity, the efforts of Nick Vorderman in adaptively reusing an existing building rather than demolishing and contributing more building material to landfills. So now, therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the government body, hereby recognize Nick Vorderman for his meticulous renovation of 27 Kings Road, which contributes to the character of the borough of Madison as a place of beauty and architectural value.
I didn't know I was going to be saying anything, but that's all right. We're new to the town, and there's clearly a lot of history and people here that have been here for a long time, so thank you for welcoming us and allowing us to do business here and hopefully contribute in a good way. I find it very ironic that Jerry and I are both getting these today, and we had our first contact today about a project, so I think we'll talk very soon. But, thank you. The mobile sign is really fun, original, and I'm just happy it's not a Dunkin' Donuts.
Jeffrey Friedel is not here, so can I put you on the spot and let you just, and give my voice a little break and let you describe why he was recognized?
I don't want your, or I can read it. I don't have my Skeeters on. Sorry, I officially hit that point.
So this is a house at 62 Ridgeville Avenue in Madison's Bodle Hill Historic District, originally built in the late 18th century, with an addition added in the rear in 1958. Is an East Jersey cottage, traditional colonial style specific to northeastern New Jersey. Mr. Jeffrey Friedel, who purchased the house in, Freidell, thank you, purchased the house in 2018 and lived in it part-time, determined the house needed to be renovated and updated for modern living, or would otherwise be a candidate for a tear down. Mr. Freidell educated himself on the history of the construction style needed for preservation, was able to retain the characteristic story in a story and a half form, adding two gabled dormers to the front of the house, provided additional light and much-needed headroom to the rooms on the second floor, a typical addition to the houses of this style. And he was able to reuse the original windows and their glass, re-point the basement historically appropriate lime mortar, retaining the historic details of the home. And the Historic Preservation Commission congratulates and commends Jeffrey Freidell for his saving the historic home and preserving the original style of both the house and the neighborhood. So now there I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the government body, hereby recognize Mr. Jeffrey Freidell for the meticulous renovation and preservation of his home at 62 Ridgeville Avenue, which contributes to the character of the borough of Madison as a place of beauty and architectural value. So, thank you for leading the way. I encourage everyone to stop by these places and take a look at the great renovations and improvements, and also, the HPC is a great resource. If you have an old home, they are, they have their challenges, but they are special, and we can help you keep them special. So, thank you.
Just want to thank everybody involved in these projects, so it's really important to just remind people how we can take what might look to be old and worn down and not in great condition and restore and renovate and bring it up to modern living standards, maintain historic character that brings so many people to Madison and still have a beautiful home worth living in. And it's worth noting that there are three East Jersey cottages on Ridgeville Avenue that have been renovated and purchased by young couples in the past few years, and they're thriving, and I look forward to seeing properties like this continually being lived in by the families of Madison.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll say much less than the next 20. Onto reports from committees, community affairs, Council President Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm the Downtown Development Commissioner and the Director of Business Development. The Madison Farmers Market is now open on Thursdays. Please visit all the terrific vendors at Dodge Field from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. Season Conclude continues through November 16th, and will feature Live Music Weekly. Downtown Concert Series, held at the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, will begin with Jumping the Gun on Friday, June 23rd. The concepts are from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Please bring your chair and plan to have dinner or dessert downtown. Bodle Hill Day will be held on Saturday, October 7th, this fall. sponsorship and vendor information has been published and is available on RoseNet. Staples, as the mayor mentioned, Staples at the Madison Plaza, recently held a grand reopening on Thursday, June 9th. They have reopened for business after an extended closure due to emergency roof repairs. They have reopened for business after an extended closure due to emergency roof repairs. Looks very nice, by the way. Affinity Federal Credit Union located at 18 Elmer Street will hold its grand ribbon cutting ceremony on Thursday, June 13th. Starbucks will close, bless you, at 309 Main Street and move across the street at Madison Plaza sometime before the end of June. They will be closed for a short-term term to allow for this transition. The New Pastry Shop and Dance Cafe, Delise Bacron, located at 82 Madison Street, is due to open its doors of business before the end of June. From the Chamber of Commerce, fire extinguishers are scheduled for Thursday, review are scheduled for Thursday, June 13th, 12 to 4:00 p.m. Location is central on Main Avenue. Inspections are $20 for fire extinguisher and $15 for chamber members. In the Madison Community Arts Center, the Pride Month Gallery is up on the walls of the Roseum, four alums of the Cubert School in Dover, featuring comic book and graphic novel art. Gallery hours are posted on the MACA Arts Center website. The show continues on July 2nd. Additional Pride Month events include comedy night on Saturday, June 17th, a music showcase featuring LGBTQ plus musicians, benefiting nonprofit Boris County Organization Edge, and Divas in Mind, featuring Very Jerry Mastrolia, on Saturday, June, July 2nd. Red Cross Blood Drive will be held at the center on Wednesday, June 28th, from 12 to 7:00. Apairments can be made at the Red Cross Blood Services website. Walk-ins are also welcome. Open mics continue on Wednesdays through, through the summer. There is a music open mic this week on June 14th, and a comedy open mic on June 22nd. The New Jersey Jazz Society held a concert with pianist Ted Rosenthal on Sunday, June 11th. The First Rose Pavilion Outdoor Summer Concert will be held on Friday, June 30th, at 6:00 p.m. In case of rain, the concert will move indoors. First band up is the big, the big, the big band. Thank you and have a nice weekend. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Just one clarifying, the affinity ribbon cutting and opening is tomorrow night, starting at 5:30, actual ribbon cutting, that's the 30. And Public Works Engineering, Ms. Erlich?
Thank you, Mayor. The engineering department reports on several projects in different phases. They were pleased to note that there was a well-attended ribbon cutting at the MRC Trail Project. As the mayor noted, there was a ribbon cutting there on National Trails Day. Dennis Harrington from our engineering department was there, and I think he was proud to see people enjoying the trails and celebrating the opening.
The MRC Trail Project, basketball field on court, the contract is unawarded, and the contractor plans to be getting construction on the track next month, July of 2020 days. Construction of the Green Avenue, the South Block, through the state's garden markets on Monday, Thursday. For the Madison Public Library, a number of gifts were received, RPD, and a couple of rare jewelry, and a bag of merchandise. The Memorial Park Trail Construction is ongoing. These are the trails that the community bought in 2004, the Royal Fields, and the St. John's Road, the third. And the sewer line construction that I mentioned at the last meeting is still in progress. And just to note to residents, please pay attention to contact notices and public notices about sewer line procedures, while we're coming in, we're back in the line of policy that has grown out on that, Main Street, West Street, Main Street, community places for that. And finally, yeah, I'm not sure if you have any answers, but yes, if you just have a problem, you can definitely ask the parks and trails, so that work is progress, and that works, and that works. The PDW reports that they've been using an electric, all electric bucket loader that's unknown from the next chapter of the research, and we shall do that on the PDW program that Public Works uses on electric vehicles. Our PDW director, Ken O'Brien, reported that he is very impressed with the institute's name, because it's all electric, and that our PDW is definitely keeping it on the radar as what we have to do with this. PDW is out planning to use the, using the entry board and network to get this to the string, but we need to see the balance. Just to note about free removals in town, the free removal permitting process has been defined, clarified with property owners that they must provide a, kind of, free contact with, and that the removal must be on site with the company. That's all for today.
Thank you, Mayor. So, for your question, what they, they, what 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 they, what
Mr. Harlan Poudis?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 35-2023 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there in a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Now we move on to the second of two invitations for public comment. This is when you may comment on any topic. Reminder, try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we give you a one-minute grace period, and we'll ask you to stop at four minutes. When you step up, please state your name, address, and start your comments.
Oh, let me write first. My name is Christina Chris Hepburn. I live at 1 Lightning Bug Hollow Road in Hardwick. I'm here tonight because of recent horrible air conditions, air, yeah, conditions, from wildfire smoke from Canada. I think you probably all noticed it. And experts are telling us that wildfire smoke is going to be a more frequent and serious problem going forward. It's scary. This past Wednesday, which was a bad smoke day, I joined others in the Drew Woods for a morning tour. It was only when I came out of the woods, after a good hour and a half or two, that I started coughing and noticed the smoke. Now that's just my personal experience and the experience of a few others I was with, but science backs it up. Trees reduce air pollution, pollution that consists both of gaseous matter and also particulate matter, the fine dust, tiny particles, thinner than a piece of your hair, that comes from car and other exhausts and from fire. Smoke from fire, in fact, contains particularly dangerous particles for the health of our lungs and our hearts. One tree in an urban setting, I'm pretty sure it was a maple tree, has been shown to reduce, to remove three pounds of air pollution in one year. Just one acre of trees in New Jersey has been shown to remove, on average, 76 pounds of air pollution per year. It's no wonder that it's found that it's healthier to live near clusters of trees and, of course, near actual forests. Think of all the air that moves through the Drew Forest, 53 acres of trees, many of them quite large. This is just one reason that the Drew Forest needs to keep standing. And now I'd like to talk to the powers that be at Drew University. Okay, Alex. Property owners do not get zoning changes they want in order to maximize the price of selling their property. That's my main message. For example, when I owned 69 Glen Wild Road, right adjacent to the Drew Woods, I had 26 acres. I could have easily fit four nice condo units in the front, in front of my house. But of course, our zoning regulations would not allow that, and I'm sure I wouldn't have been able to get those zoning. The zoning changed so that when I sold my house, I could make more money, you know, that I wanted to or I needed to make more money than the current zoning of my house allowed.[1462.91]